This is the regular weekly meeting of the Mobile City Council for Tuesday, April 4th, 2017. Please stand as Chaplain Charles Bell of the Mobile Metro Jail leads us in invocation and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Oh God, our Creator, Sustainer, and Lover of all life and lives, I stand in prayer today on behalf of the 195,000 residents of our beautiful, diverse, and historical city of Mobile, Alabama. Particularly, I come to pray for our mayor and city council members, we have elected and tasked to both govern and represent all of us who call Mobile home. Their task, while necessary and ordained by you, oh God, is not easy. They are called to govern and represent fairly and without prejudice, a population of noticeable and notable diversities. We worship in synagogues, in churches, in cathedrals, in mosques, in temples, in storefronts, or by the bay, or we choose to worship nowhere. We are sometimes blessed to have winter and summer homes, and sometimes we feel fortunate to have a tent that does not leak. We live in suburbia, midtown, and in our crowded inner cities. We are black and white and brown and bronze and shades of all. We see Mobile from balconies, from porches, and sometime we see through the bars in Bob Whire Metro Jail. We are artists, professionals, technicians, laborers, and too many of us are unemployed. We are gay, straight, and transgendered. We are Republican, Democrats, independents, and we that just don't know. We are youth with the vigor of life, and we are seasons, seniors seasoned by age. We are new immigrants to the city, and sometime we trace our ancestors to the founding of Mobile. We have voices, subtle or loud, that are heard, and we have voices unless they are loud or not heard. In these and other diversities, oh God, Creator, Sustainer, and Source of all love, our elected officials are called to govern and to represent all fairly and without prejudice. As we build our canopy of prayer, let it extend over this government facility and all who we have called to govern and lead us. We pray honestly and sincerely for our city officials and thank them for their willingness to serve in the midst of all of our lives. In the words of one of your great prophets, "He has shown thee, O man, what is good and what doth the Lord require of thee but to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with thy God." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of Rules.
Good morning, everybody. Glad to see you here. I know we had some rough weather yesterday, and then this morning on the way in, the fog was so heavy, it was hard to see too far in front of you. But it looks like it's kind of getting sunny now, so the fog is burning off, and we'll have a nice day, of course, tomorrow. We'll be back under some severe weather, so please be careful out there. I know all of our Public Works employees are on standby to take care of any problems that might happen. Yesterday, we had two fires, both of those in Mrs. Rich's district. Our firefighters were there immediately and were taking care of the problem, but one of our firefighters was injured, and we haven't heard yet on his injuries, but hopefully he will be back on the job very quickly. We thank them for their quick service and all that they do for our city. In the meantime, we welcome you all again for coming. If you come to the podium to speak, you'll have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's the indication that it's time for you to begin wrapping up. We ask that you turn off all of your electronic devices so that anyone here at the podium or the council's desk are not interfered with. And again, we just thank you for coming, look forward to hearing from some of you. I have a proclamation that I'll be standing in for the mayor this morning. I'll introduce a very important group that is here today. So, thank you all. Ms. Merchant?
Approval of Minutes of the Meeting of March 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office?
Nothing here, other than to congratulate your president on the anniversary of her wedding day.
All right.
It is my pleasure this morning to stand in for the mayor, to present a proclamation to some very important folks who were with us this morning. This is National Service Day, and if you get your National League of Cities newsletters, you have probably seen this already. Every day in countries, or in counties and cities across America, national service is tackling tough problems and strengthening communities. And today, April 4th, mayors, county officials across the country are thanking those who serve and recognize their impact on the Mayor and County Recognition Day for national service, and that's what I'm doing this morning. And some of the volunteers are here from the various agencies, along with their directors. So if I could have Tony Robinson from Foster Grandparent Program, Stacy Killingsworth from the RSVP, and Linda Davis and others who are here with the Senior Companion Program to join me at the podium. We definitely want to get some pictures, Marion, if you've got your camera. Y'all, come on down. Again, these are representatives from many of our different service organizations, and we really thank them for all that they do. The recognition is National Service Day in recognition of the many organizations for their service and volunteerism within the city of Mobile, done on this fourth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2017, and it is proclaimed by the mayor and all of us here on the city council. So we want to thank them for all that they do. The ground of applause. Can you help me introduce everybody? We'll try. Okay. Here's the question.
Well, I'm Tony Robinson.
Okay, Tony.
And this is Stacy Killingsworth. And Flora and Jaclyn, that's representing Senior Companion today for Linda Davis. And these are our volunteers, RSVP, Senior Companion, and Foster Grandparents.
Well, it's great to have you here. Thank you so much for all that you do. We do have a certificate of recognition here, and we want to take some photos. Tony, if you'd like to say a few words, why don't you do that, and then we'll take some photos. And anybody else who wants to just provide a few words to the council and the people here in the audience about what you do and why it's so important to be here and also what you do every day to help people in our community. So this is your question.
Well, okay, well, we certainly appreciate the support of the city, the mayor in his absence, our foster grandparents, the volunteers who serve children who have special or exceptional needs throughout Mobile County. They volunteer their services to help with mentoring and tutoring, and we are making a difference in the community, and we appreciate all of your support.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any volunteer want to talk about what you do or your different organizations? Come on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Madeline Wolf. I currently volunteer at USA Children and Women, primarily in the newborn nursery, and it's a pleasure to be there. We take care of the little babies, and we'd be of any assistance we can to the nurses, and it's just a pleasure to do that.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Celestine Thomas, and I started volunteering in 1997. I started with the City Museum, History Museum, and now I am with Guff Quests, Singer Theater, the Carnival Museum, and the History Museum.
Wow. Thank you.
We do want to say thank you. My name is Stacy Killingsworth. I'm the Executive Director for RSVP, and we do engage and connect individuals who are 55 years of age and older in volunteer service throughout our community. So as you've seen from a few of our volunteers that are here today, we actually have over 400 active volunteers, and we work with over 80 nonprofit agencies throughout Mobile County to provide volunteers. So, we're happy to be here. Thank you for the recognition.
Good morning. I'm Flora Etheridge with the Senior Companion Program. We also serve the community. We also have seniors 55 and older who goes into the home of elderly friends, and our main purpose is to keep them out of nursing homes and to give the caregiver some relief time. And we thank you all so much for your support. Because it wasn't for your support, we could not do as well of a job as we do. And my oldest senior that I have that goes out and serves the time is 92 years old, still dry. So, we're doing something good for the community. Like I said, Linda Davis is our director. She's on vacation right now. I told her she took a good time to be on vacation while we're working. Like I said, I'm Flora Etheridge, and this is Jaclyn Bolden. We work with the Senior Companion Program, and thank you all for everything that you do for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Diane George. I'm a tutor. I tutors sixth graders from Bogota, Washington. Mine is a terrible thing to waste, so I'm very involved, I'm very serious, and I'm down to the front. But also, I show love and affection, let them know that they are needed, and I am a foster grandparent.
All right.
Thank you.
With all the recusers and how we need to stand, we probably need to gather in a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, we can get a few more folks over here. Our lone gentleman. Okay. And we'll hold the confirmation out. Okay, can you see everybody? Oh, okay. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, yes.
Don't cover your face, though. Thank you. Thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate all you do.
We appreciate you all, too.
Tony, what is on? Yeah, sure. That's fine. If you want to stay for the whole meeting, you can. Well, you gotta get your work.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance on May 6th at Cathedral Square, on April 11th at 451 Government Street, April 7th and 8th on 564 Dolphin Street, May 13th Fulton Ridge Frye Park, and April 16th Langen Park.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on any of these?
On that Fulton Ridge, we're gonna hold it up for one week.
Okay, all right. All right, why don't we hold that one out, Ms. Merchant, vote on it separately?
Okay. Okay, request of Norman Lucas for a waiver of the noise ordinance at Fulton Ridge Park on May 13th from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Can we move that one over for one week?
Yes, one week.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. The presentation by Wylen Smith will be held at the end of the agenda, and we have no other presentations. Ordinance is held over. 41-011 requires that the official seal of the city of Mobile be displayed on all parks, buildings, and properties owned or maintained by the city, and on all signs located on these properties.
Motion to layover for one week.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
88-012 authorized a quitclaim deed to South Broad LLC.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
88-012 authorized a quitclaim deed to South Broad LLC.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
88-0183 authorized performance contract with GSI Services to furnish and install security card readers, Mobile Police Department, various locations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
88-0184 authorized performance contract with EC Malone Corporation for Taylor Park Community Center re-roof.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
This morning, we have some people from Taylor Park. I know y'all went and inspected me to call you all out, so since you all came, we want y'all to stand up. Ms. Chestang, Ms. Pat, you know you came with us, and Ramon Fale, would y'all please stand up? I'd like to commend these three people, especially Ms. Chestang. I mean, times that it rained at Taylor Park, you know, Ms. Chestang had to go and find garbage cans to pull out to catch the water. But I do commend what you all do for Taylor Park and the community as a whole and as Oakdale as a whole. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be a great improvement. Long overdue. Yes, ma'am. All right.
And we've got some more things coming up, and soon we should be cutting a breaking ground for a walking trail out there, too. So some great things are happening at Taylor Park.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
25-187 accept a permanent sidewalk easement needed for McGregor Avenue Sidewalk Project.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37-188 approve the application of Marla G. and Justin Nicholas Doing Business as Nicholas Transportation Services.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, number 37-190 through 37-196.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, 37-190 through 37-196.
So we're gonna vote on some for layovers.
Yeah.
We had.
Read that again, Mr. Richardson.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, 37-190 through 37-196. And when those who want a layover, we can motion to do that as we go down.
Yeah, we're laying over 193, 195, and 196.
More than one wait, the...
Yes.
But we got the motion, right.
So we probably just read them out.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. The confusion is over the fact that some of these are going to be laid over and they have to be voted on. So Ms. Merchant, why don't you just read these off individually, and we'll just vote on them?
All right. 37-190, 191, 192 are recommended approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for the Cinco de Mayo celebrations for Azteuscas on Highway 90, for Hacienda San Miguel on Schillinger Road, and for Hacienda San Miguel of Theodore.
So moved.
Second.
Before we do that, we still have to vote to waive the rules on these.
Oh, okay.
So we do need to back up. All in favor of waiving the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now Ms. Merchant.
Okay, that'd be 37-190 through 37-192, and we have a motion in a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37-193 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to J&amp;T Convenience Store on North Broad Street.
A motion to layover two weeks.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37-194 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Jets on Airport Boulevard.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37-195 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Just Us Three Convenience Store on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue.
Motion to layover two weeks.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I just want, this is a standard practice for individuals coming before this council for this type of license and/or permission from the city. I have run into some issues with bad actors who receive this type of license. We get constant complaints from the community, particularly in certain areas, and so I found it important to meet the owners of these establishments, to really get a feel for how they plan to operate their businesses, so that when I do get complaints, I know exactly who to contact and know exactly who I can reach out to to find some remedy to any issues that the community might be bringing to my attention. If I'm able to make those contacts between now and next week, we'll have it added back to the agenda quicker than that. But until then, I think this will be a sufficient amount of time in order to make that contact needed.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37-196 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class One license to Reflections Ultra Lounge on North Water Street.
Move to layover three weeks.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21-197 through 31-205.
By Council Rules, resolutions 21-197 through 31-205, we'll layover for one week.
Okay. Announcements. Now we'll have the presentation by Wylen Smith.
Madam President, may I make my announcements?
Oh, you want to go ahead and do the announcements first?
Yeah.
Okay, since Shayla's now got us set it up, perfect timing. Okay, let's start with Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. First of all, I appreciate the indulgence here as I'm scheduled to attend a luncheon across town, and I need to be early. The District Four, as my friend CJ Small likes to say, that's where things are happening. I'm starting to think that I need to start a scoreboard so we can find out where things are really happening the most. Right now, it's really a great time to be in the city of Mobile, but particularly in District Four, so many great developments going on. We're continuing through District Three and District Four to develop McGowan Park, and we're finding that the customers are coming from Mississippi, Panhandle of Florida, Tennessee. People drive a long way to shop at their favorite shopping centers, and all of that development is doing very well. Part of that development is an old movie theater. I say an old movie theater, but Hollywood is doing very well indeed, that fact that people are going to eat at our restaurants in McGowan Park and then going to see a movie. And next week, we hope that those same people that are choosing to eat and shop at McGowan Park will take a little time and spend their evening at the Mobile Bay Bears. That begins their home season Wednesday, next Wednesday that is, at 6:35 p.m. The team is starting their season this week, but they're going to be in Chattanooga. They always start out of town. But it's promised to be a great season. We've made some tremendous improvements to the park, and so the overall experience is going to be much better than we're accustomed to, and it is really what this city deserves. The other thing I'm proud to announce is that there is a walking path. We saw on the agenda and when things were held over that we're going to do a tremendous development on Three Mile Creek, but it is the goal of the administration to connect the whole city. And part of that is happening in District Four on Lamar Canal, where we just laid a six-foot wide asphalt path that is open to the public, and it will be receiving benches as we move forward and some low-level lighting. But it's open for people to ride bikes on and to walk on now. That's on the south side of Lamar Canal, running from Hallsmill and Azalea to I-65 and Government. Please go out, take a look, take your family. The last thing I would like to remind people is that the weeds are growing, and they're growing fast. And this is beginning of the season, you know, it's hard to control those weeds. And one sure way of getting your neighbors to cut their grass and keep their lawn is to do your own. So I encourage everybody to take the time this week, as the growing season begins, to set the example for your neighborhood. Thank you very much, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Williams was just speaking of. Yes, it is raining outside, and many of our districts have blockaded properties. I want to remind the citizens that if you see the blockaded piece of property and the grass that starts growing, go ahead and dial 311 and report it. Sometimes it takes time to go and get those grass cut. The quicker you call 311, the more sooner it can get cut. And again, we're just encouraging all citizens, especially, you know, the ones that's in the majority of our districts, that have blockaded pieces of properties that are just sitting there. If you see any overgrown piece of property, just simply just pick up the phone and just dial 311 and report it. On this past Saturday was a busy Saturday morning in District Three, starting at 7:30 a.m. for me. I had to go over to Arlington Park and bring greetings to the Fourth Annual Crete Murder Trail Bike Ride. It was a great success this year. Many people came out, a family-friendly event, and rolled along the Mobile Bay. I'd like to thank Airbus as the leading sponsor of this event, and others who are also who have participated to make this a great success. And again, this was a wonderful, wonderful, family-friendly event on last Saturday morning. Also, after I left Arlington Park, I had to go over to Doyle Park and also bring greetings to Mobile County Board of Health, and also Mobile United has sponsored a walk along Doyle Park. And it was a beautiful morning to take a walk looking over at the Airbus facility. Doyle Park is one of the most beautiful parks that we have, not in District Three, but in the city of Mobile, and encourage all citizens to participate and take part in the park at Doyle Park. Also, on Saturday morning, went over to the Manor Restaurant where we had the Taste of the Parkway for the Boys and Girls Club for South Alabama for the Giar Elementary Summer Program. It was a great success. We had many restaurants that had participated on this past Saturday for this fundraiser. I'd like to thank the Boys and Girls Club and also Mrs. Betty Fowler for administering this event. Again, this event was this past Saturday, and this is like their second annual tasting that they had for additional sources for money for the Giar Elementary School Summer Boys and Girls Program. On Monday, April 10th, at 6:00 p.m., will be our district meeting at the Community Baptist Church, and that's at 2514 Hallsmill Road, inviting all citizens of District Three to please come out at 6:00 p.m. again on Monday, April 10th, on 2514 Hallsmill Road at the Community Baptist Church where the Reverend Carl Colker is the pastor. And if you have any questions or concern that you want to be addressed at this particular meeting, please call me at 208-7441, again at 208-7441. And also, on Saturday, April 15th, at 3:00 p.m., will be our Fifth Annual Easter Egg Hunt at Taylor Park on Baltimore Street, inviting all the citizens... It was a great success, we had many restaurants that had participated on this past Saturday for this fundraiser. I had to thank the Boys and Girls Club and also Mrs. Betty Fowler for administering this event. Again, this event was this past Saturday, and this is like their second annual tasting that they had for additional sources for money for the Giar Elementary School Summer Boys and Girls Program. On Monday, April the tenth, at six o'clock P.M., will be our district meeting at the Community Baptist Church, and that's at twenty-five, fourteen Hallsmill Road, inviting all citizens of District Three to please come out at six o'clock P.M., again, on Monday, April the tenth, on twenty-five, fourteen Hallsmill Road at the Community Baptist Church where the Reverend Carl Colker is the pastor. And if you have any questions or concern that you want to be addressed at this particular meeting, please call me at two-zero-eight, seven-four-four-one, again, at two-zero-eight, seven-four-four-one. And also, on Saturday, April the fifteenth, at three o'clock P.M., will be our Fifth Annual Easter Egg Hunt at Taylor Park on Baltimore Street, inviting all the citizens with kids from infants to twelve-year-old to come on out and enjoy this family-friendly event. And we also want to have an Easter Egg Hunt for the adults also. You know, Councilman Manzi had made an announcement on last week stating that he having an Easter Egg Hunt earlier that day, but I would just say, just go and just get your appetizers, and then when you leave, Councilman Manzi, Easter Egg Hunt, and you come over to District Three and get the, get the real thing, and this is just a sample of what's going to go on, on April the fifteenth.
I'm not against it.
Mr. Manzi will be over.
I think Manzi had messed me up, let me start this over one more time.
Is this a two-minute commercial?
Now, Councilman Manzi, and to all the residents of Mobile, District Three is the place where things are happening, thank you, Madam President.
Well, what I was going to say, Mr. Small, is that Mr. Manzi and the rest of us may want to come for the adult Easter Egg Hunt.
I'm all for that.
Okay, Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Passover that we'll be celebrating, it starts Monday evening, April tenth, and so I hope it's a good and happy time for your families, and just wanted to note that as well, I know Easter is around the corner, too. The Public Safety Committee meeting will be April eleventh next week at two o'clock, and we'll meet in the Government Plaza Auditorium, right where we are now. And again, that's this coming Tuesday, a week from today, rather, at two o'clock. Also, the Mobile Pops Concert will have their fortieth season initiated when they come out to Medal of Honor to have a free concert, and that's at seven P.M. on April fifteenth, a Saturday evening. Please make that on your calendar and hope that you'll come out and join that wonderful event. Also, for calling three-one-one, as my other colleagues have mentioned, this is an important time of year because of the, the weeds and the grass that has a tendency to just take off, especially with all our rain. There is another number to call if you, if you are not wired into three-one-one, and that's two-zero-eight, five-three-one-one. So if you can kind of put that number aside if you need to call it, because sometimes your service on your cell phone is not the service that will ring to three-one-one, again, that number is two-zero-eight, five-three-one-one. Also, this is also commemorating a sad day in our American history, forty-nine years ago, we lost the life of a true public servant leader and initiator of civil rights, and I just would like to denote that passing of Martin Luther King when he was shot and killed in Memphis forty-nine years ago today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rich, and I do want to announce that our colleague, Mrs. Rich, has received a terrific honor. She has been named this year's, let's see, it's Transparency Award going to Best Rich, there's going to be a celebration, it's from the League of Women Voters, and the celebration will be held on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, honoring Mrs. Rich for giving laudable and outstanding attention and credibility to the importance of transparency in government. So we want to congratulate Mrs. Rich for receiving this honor, and hopefully everyone attend her celebration. Good job, Best, I knew you wouldn't say anything, so I wanted to make sure that we congratulated Best on this great achievement. All right, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, go Best, go. All right, thank you, Madam President, I want to start off by saying that on Thursday, April the twentieth, starting at six P.M., we will be holding our community meeting for residents in the Forest Hill Community, and this meeting will be held at the Forest Hill Elementary School. We have lots of exciting speakers coming, talking about jobs, job training, public safety, just, and we're going to talk about the CIP projects that's planned that we've already completed and that's planned for the area. So we also would like to create a community action group in that community. We don't have one, and it shows, it's a vacuum. We would like to bring the leaders together to see if we can create a community action group, and the focus of that group is going to be public safety. So I'm inviting, I'm asking all of the citizens in the Forest Hill area of Moffett Road, north side of Moffett Road in District One, to please come out and join us in this, on this important occasion of your community meeting. When we held the city council meeting in District One, we had a number of people coming out talking about GAF and a paperboard company, and they claimed that the odors coming from those plants were unbearable, and they wanted something done about it. So I wrote A.D.A.M., I wrote to Director Lance LaFleur, and I made sure he understood what the citizens had complained about, and I asked him if he would conduct a study to make sure that the air quality is what it, it should be. I received a lengthy, I think it's fourteen-page response from Mr. LaFleur, and in his response, he, he had documentation to show that he had conducted a number of studies already in the last, last two years regarding that plant, and he sent me copies of those studies. He also said that he would be conducting unannounced studies, he's, they're going, he's going to send his personnel to visit both the paperboard company and GAF, and to conduct unannounced studies of the air quality over there. And I've received calls and emails from people regarding that study. So in light of that, I'm going to have today copies of that study sent to all libraries in District One, all community centers in District One, and I'm going to have it posted on this city's website. So anybody would like to read it, I know some people would say, well, I don't have a computer, so sending it out electronically won't help me. That's why I'm sending it to the libraries. I have a Tobinville Library, it's a library in Trinity Gardens, where people can actually go up there and see it, and I'm going to send it to the community centers, Figures Center, Darts Center, and, and all of them. So hopefully, people will be able to see it from there. The Juniors Symphony will be in Trinity Gardens on May seventh, Sunday, May seventh. This is the second annual event for the youth orchestra to come and perform at the amphitheater, the Micah C. Dow Amphitheater in Trinity Gardens, starting at three P.M. I'm asking the entire community and beyond to come out. These kids last year did an outstanding job. I'm going to see if I can get a couple of church choirs to come to open up for us and put the show on the road, get everybody into the spirit, and then we want to turn it over to the children, and let the children rock the house and rock the neighborhood. So I'm asking the citizens, especially in the Trinity Gardens area, to get ready. Tobinville, Crichton, I want you to come and see these children perform, and encourage them to be the best that they can be using music. I want to say a little about John opening up about the Greenway Initiative. The Greenway Initiative is going to be fourteen miles long when we finish it. It's going to start from the Mobile River going up to U.S.A., following the trail of the Three Mile Creek right away. Three Mile Creek is the longest creek in the city of Mobile, too. So they, it's only agenda today, Phase One is on our agenda today. Once we vote next week on this, hopefully they are going to, they're going to start construction. Construction is going to start at Tricentennial Park on the north side of Three Mile Creek, and it's going to Ridge Road West, that's Phase One. It's going to be ten feet wide, it's going to be for hiking, biking, walking, we're going to have solar lighting, we're going to have benches, it's going to be something unlike what we have seen in this city before, and it's going to run along Three Mile Creek. This, I, I came down here in nineteen ninety-seven, and I announced in nineteen ninety-seven that my goal is for Three Mile Creek to be recreational, and it's unfolding before my eyes, my dream of what I want Three Mile Creek to be. There will be a lunch at Three Mile Creek where you can canoe and kayak, all of that's going to be a part of the, the new construction down there for folks who want to get in the creek, can actually get in at Tricentennial Park and go up and down Three Mile Creek. This is exciting, this is exciting. The only, I announced in nineteen ninety-seven, I wanted to see something done with Highway Forty-Five. We've had a few little things done, but it's ridiculous that the government has spent so much money in, on all of these other U.S. highways, and spent so little on U.S. Highway Forty-Five. I would say the largest minority business district in the state of Alabama is along U.S. Highway Forty-Five, starting in District Two, running all the way through Pritchett. And that section has been neglected, most of it, we don't have any sidewalks, no modern lights, no curves, no gutters, it has been neglected, and I'm still a voice crying in the wilderness, and I will not cease until something is done. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Mr. Daves?
Thank you, Madam President. We had a District Five community meetings last week, a week ago tonight, at Westminster Presbyterian Church, had a good turnout there, Mayor Stimson spoke, Public Services Director Harkins spoke, I took questions, and as I said, it was a good meeting and a good interchange, and I want to thank Westminster Presbyterian Church and their staff for providing the venue for that, they always do a great job. A number of the council members and I were at an announcement at the APM terminals, the container terminal, last week on the Walmart Distribution Center. This, you know, this, the official announcement, this, this hasn't really gotten as much coverage as TK did or the Airbus foul has gotten, but this is another transformative development in our city, forty-something acres under roof, huge development out there, going to employ five-hundred-and-fifty people in high-paying jobs, and there will be an additional six-hundred forty-foot containers a week coming through our port. This is an increase of about twenty percent, I understand, over our current volume in the port, so it's, it really is a tremendous boost for our port, and what helps our port helps our city, and a great announcement. And that, I just want to mention that that project, like so many of these others, like Airbus, is a result of fifteen or more years of work by our city officials, our state officials, our county officials, the Chamber of Commerce Support Authority. These things don't happen overnight, they take a lot of work over a long period of time. Councilman Manzi and I attended the park-to-park cleanup this past Saturday morning, it went from Public Safety Memorial Park to Memorial Park. We had about a hundred-and-twenty people out there at eight o'clock Saturday morning, it was a good turnout, it was a beautiful day, as everybody knows. There was a lot of litter out there, and, and I wanted to take a minute to talk about litter because, you know, when, eighty or ninety percent of what's out there, if you've ever picked up, then you know eighty percent or ninety percent of what's out there is discarded food and beverage containers, and this is just people throwing this stuff out of their car after they, excuse me, go through the drive-through. Well, what happens to it when it gets thrown out of the car, is it either stays there on the side of the road, or we have a big rain like we had yesterday, and it floats down the road and ends in a drain, and it clot, and it ends, accumulates in the drain. What does one of two things once it gets in the drain, it either sits there and clogs up the drain, so the road starts flooding, or it goes through the system and ends up in the bay or in Dog River or in Three Mile Creek, and, and litters, litters it all up. You know, if you, I, probably none of the people I'm speaking to, either here in this room or on the TV, do that, but I just urge all of our citizens, not only not to litter, but to organize pickups in your neighborhoods and, and, and help the city out. We, you know, we simply don't have the manpower to clean every street in the city every two weeks. It'd take hundreds of people to do that, and there's got to be citizen involvement helping us out there. We will have a finance committee meeting on April thirteenth at two o'clock P.M., that's to talk about the twenty-eighteen capital improvement plan, this is the last year of the current authorization in the capital improvement plan, and I look forward to having a very good meeting on that day. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President, I want to announce a series of community meetings that I will be holding, starting tonight at the Emmanuel Seventh Day Adventist Church, two thousand Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue. It'll be tonight at six o'clock, continuing on Thursday, April the sixth, twenty-seventeen, at the Yorktown Baptist Church, eight fifty-one East Street, and our final meeting will be on Tuesday, April the eleventh, twenty-seventeen, at the Saint Peter Baptist Church, six fifty South Bayou Street. You all are citizens of District Two, you are welcome to attend one or all of these meetings, various department heads, City of Mobile will be there. Mr. Nitro Bell Henderson will be at two of those meetings to discuss the YES Initiative and the nearly thirty-nine-hundred young people who avail themselves of that summer employment opportunity, and also several others from the administration here at the city of Mobile, so we certainly invite citizens in District Two to come out to those meetings. On Saturday, I participated with Councilman Daves with the park-to-park cleanup, he was a little slower than I was, he was on his end, I was on mine, I believe I might have collected more bags of trash than he did, but I'm not going to make a contest out of it.
That's good, you're not going to make a contest.
Not going to make a contest. Left there with those one-hundred-and-twenty participants and had the opportunity to, with Mr. Cleon Jones from the Plateau, Plateau Community, speak about that community's importance to a delegation from South Africa and a group from Jack and Jill of Albany, Georgia. Just totally coincidental that we all aligned ourselves at that space, that group from Georgia just came down, imagine, they took a five-hour trip to come to Mobile to tour Afriktown. So what that tells me is that we have a goldmine there in the Afriktown community that we really need to make a concerted effort to uncover, to take the covers off and let the world know. and let the world know this is our story, this is our history, this is our heritage. Because that shows me that people are certainly interested in it. Left there and celebrated the ninetieth birthday of Miss Antoinette Singleton, seventy-five-year member of the Yorktown Baptist Church, still in great health, her family was in great numbers there and appreciative of the opportunity to participate in her ninetieth birthday celebration. On Saturday, April the fifteenth, if you go by the Waffle House and there are no eggs, it's because Councilman Small had bought them all for his Easter egg hunt. But we're going to take the few that we can muster together and try to have us a little hunt in District Two on Saturday, April the fifteenth, 2017, from eleven AM to two PM at the Thomas Sullivan Community Center, 351 North Catherine Street, working with the Mobile City Fair Women Youth Clubs to get this off the ground, along with the leadership there at the Thomas Sullivan Center. Want to speak briefly on the Three Mile Creek Initiative and I'll have more to say when we actually vote next week. I'm especially proud of this initiative, proud of all the hard work that went into obtaining the grant that we'll be voting to accept on next week. I had an opportunity to attend a DECA grant training program and learned of it, brought it back. And want to thank Mr. Nigel Roberts and his team, who guided us through the process and ensured that we submitted the paperwork on, in a timely manner to Tom Herter and Mobile Bay National Estuary Program, Mobile Bay Keeper, everyone that was associated with turning the grant in, in a prompt manner, the administration, Mayor Stimson, everyone that's worked with the administration to get this off the ground. This will be transformative from a recreational amenities standpoint in the city of Mobile. The only reason it's not starting in District Two is because Mars and the Housing Board have some issues to work out relative to an outfall line and relative to the project that they have at Roger Williams. But I'm happy to see that it will begin at Tricentennial and then we'll backtrack and come on and get the section hopefully in District Two. This will be transformative again for our city and I'm proud that, that we've allocated resources for this year to continue funding its implementation. Want to remind citizens, as I close, that we are in the midst of our resurfacing effort. One million dollars in resurfacing in District Two, from Tobinville to Church Street East in the Plateau Community. All communities are being impacted. I don't know of any other time in the city's history that we've had that level of resurfacing to begin in one district. And so, I'm proud of that. Nearly six hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk repair and sidewalk installation. I'm proud of it. I know people say, well, you say the same thing every week. Well, if you don't say it, people will take for granted that you're doing it. Citizens need to know exactly what we're doing with the penny that they're paying in our local stores. And it's not going to some of these fanciful ideas that a lot of people have. It's going toward improving the quality of life and the quality of place in our communities. And that's one of the reasons why we went down the road to create the CIP program, to continue to make tangible improvements in our neighborhoods. We've spent a lot of resources on big-box ideas and big-box projects. And I'm not knocking that. But I'm glad that we're now focusing on improving quality of life and quality of place amenities for our citizens across District Two and across the city of Mobile. And I would be remiss if I didn't also remark upon the anniversary of the death of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who passed forty-nine years ago in Memphis, Tennessee. Great man, one who proved that one man can change the trajectory of an entire world. I believe he was transformative in many, in every respect measurable. And I'm not just saying that because he made one of the better decisions of his life to become a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. He was a great man in general and we really need more Dr. Martin Luther King Juniors now. People willing to stand up and call wrong, wrong, and say right is right despite whatever enormous pressure they might be put under. And so, I think it's appropriate that we mention his effort, mention his impact, because I dare say that five of us who are sitting on this council right now, five of us, would not have the opportunity if it were not for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Five. I don't have to tell you who it is, you can look and see. Five of us would not have that opportunity if it were not for the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President?
Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry, I really, I forgot to wish Art Slack a happy ninety-sixth birthday. His, his wife would probably beat me with something if I had said how old she was, but she's only a couple of years behind him. They've been married seventy-three years.
Wow.
Both, both doing very well. It's made a difference in my life and many of the politicians, including our mayor who he, he shares a birthday with. And I understand that the mayor is, it's at one of those significant numbers in the federal laws. You might find that number somewhere. But if I, if I may also, I really, I was humbled, really, when the UTV forty-four student athlete of the week recalled, he's, he's a senior at Davidson High School. Here he is. He recalls when he started baseball at four years old and he called me by name, said Coach John Williams, our city councilman, was my coach and introduced me to the game. Just thought it was a really neat experience and he had two minutes to talk and he talked about thirty seconds about his experience of being on one of my baseball teams. And it really shows what a little bit of time by a grown-up in our public or in our, in our city can make a difference in a kid's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Joe?
Do you want to go first?
No. Just go first.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to, we've said this a couple of times in the past and, but I think it bears repeating. Every week now, we're up here talking about capital improvement projects that are going on in all the districts. And the capital improvement project, program has been a great addition to our city. But I, but I think it bears repeating that the twenty-one million dollars a year we're spending every year now is multiples above what was spent in any year in the past. And, you know, in, in the past, when we really weren't spending any money on capital improvements, no one or very few people really asked for anything. But, but now that we are spending some money and people are hearing about sidewalks that are being built here and the streets being repaved here and the drainage problem being fixed here, everybody, everybody wants their street fixed, their sidewalk fixed, their drainage problem fixed, all at the same time. Folks, we've got two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in infrastructure backlog out there and it's going to take us a while to work through it. And I, I would just ask for everybody's patience. We want to hear about your project. We want to hear what you want done. The best way to do that is call three-one-one or call one of us. But it's going to take us a while to work through it and, and, and some things are more difficult than others. And, and let me just give you a quick example. We talk about sidewalks and when you, you know, what I've tried to do, just speaking for myself, is the, the money that I have set aside every year for sidewalks and it has to be, you know, it has to be a part of what's set aside for repaving and drainage projects. The bulk of that goes to putting in sidewalks where there were not sidewalks before. There are areas in District Five where there are existing sidewalks and some of them are in good shape, some of them are in bad shape. But, but if, if I got an area that doesn't have sidewalks, I want to put them there. It's not that I'm not going to fix the other ones, but, but we're going to focus on putting the sidewalks where, where they aren't rather than fixing them. There are some places you cannot go back and put sidewalks in because there's no right-of-way because, now, Councilman, this would probably come as a surprise to Councilman Richardson, but there are areas in District Five where there are open ditches next to the roads and you can't put a sidewalk there because what happens then is you're turning a sidewalk project into a drainage project, which makes it about ten times as, ten times as expensive. So, the, the whole point of this tirade is to, is to ask for our citizens to give us some patience as we move through these projects. Please continue to tell us of those you'd like to be done, but don't expect the tractors out there tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Daves. Appreciate that. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Madam President. And I want to say first of all that the CIP program, project was created by this council. We created CIP and that is why things are happening out there because we were bold enough to create CIP. I want to tell Councilman Daves that there will not be any ditches aside, alongside the road if you close them. I have started closing the ditches in District One and I'm challenging him to close the ditches in District Five. But that's not really what I'm hell yeah for. I, I would like to say, to join my other fellow councilmembers to honor the day as the day that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was killed at the Lorraine Hotel in Memphis, Tennessee. I was able to attend his funeral. I had to get a special permission from the City of Mobile to leave the city. I had a little tag that I had to, and I had to present that to come back into the city. We have come from a mighty long ways. I want to say that Dr. King didn't die for just us. He died for justice. And he wanted justice to run down like water and righteousness as a mighty stream. And I had the opportunity to visit the National African American Archives and Museum in Washington, DC a few weeks ago. And I went in that room where they had a special exhibit honoring Dr. King. And in this room, in the ceiling, they had an oval-shaped exhibit in the ceiling where water was continuously running down and they had Dr. King over here saying that he wanted justice to run down like water and righteousness as a mighty stream. And when I came into that and saw this exhibit, it really got to me because you, they displayed what he was saying. They had justice running down like water. So, I've talked to Councilman Manzi about, we want to, we want to do something honoring the soldiers of the civil rights movement and thus far. I would like to see the water, I would like to see justice run down like water because that's what it's going to be from Caesar's shine and see, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else before I wrap it up? Just a couple of things. We had talked about a firefighter who was injured in a house fire yesterday. He has been treated and released back to duty, so that's good news on that. Also, April eleventh, we will be swearing in our brand-new police chief, Lawrence Batiste. That will be in between our council meetings, so that will be at about ten o'clock on April eleventh. I do want to mention, we talked some about litter. On Saturday, we had some community service workers out picking up the litter along Ziegler Boulevard and I was very happy to see that. Ziegler is a very heavily-trafficked thoroughfare which gets trashed up pretty quickly. So, I just want to thank those community service workers for coming out and those who set that up. The Greenway Initiative, we talked about that as well. That's very exciting. It actually begins in my district at the University of South Alabama and goes down toward downtown, toward Mr. Richardson and Mr. Manzi's district. So, we will be working on the Greenway Initiative in my district. We've got some design money already set aside. We're already doing design on the dredging side of things, so great news. I can't wait to see this project complete. It will be fantastic and talk about transformative, it really truly will be for the city of Mobile. Couple of other things, some great news. We have some new restaurants that have opened. In fact, on Saturday, there will be a ribbon-cutting for Crystal &amp; Company. That's at ten o'clock. And then Taziki's is opening in Legacy Village. It will open on April eleventh. So, everybody come on out and dine in District Seven. Anybody else, any other announcements? All right, Shayla, you're on.
When we initiated the Map for Mobile zoning overhaul, we, at your request, wanted to have our consultant come back and update us on the process throughout. So, we have Mr. Mark White here today with White &amp; Smith LLC that's going to give us an update on the work with the future land use plan and major street plan.
Thank you, Shayla. Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council. My name's Mark White with White &amp; Smith LLC. I'm the lead consultant on the general land use plan, major street plan, zoning and subdivision regulations update project. That's a, that's a mouthful. And I think Jason, did Jason just leave? Dover Cole, Jason King with Dover Cole, he's one of the sub consultants, is here in the audience. He, he assisted on, on Map for Mobile. He was part of that team and also the Village of Spring Hill Plan. And the work I'm getting ready to talk to you about was done principally by Wallace Robertson Todd and Sylvia Vargas. Sylvia is on her way. She was detained by weather, which I think you can appreciate, but she has done, she and Nancy O'Neil at WRT have done the lion's share of that work. So...
Can we turn some lights?
There we go. All right. So, these two maps are what we are presenting and unveiling this week, these draft maps. The one on the left is the current general land use plan. The one on the right is your current major street plan. Good, now you can actually see what I'm talking about. Great, thank you. Okay. These are currently, the general land use plan is currently part of the 1998 Comprehensive Plan, but it's not part of Map for Mobile. The new future land use plan and major street plans will be. It's very broad in nature. You have your three major land use categories, residential, commercial, and industrial, and it is designed to support what happens in the rezoning process and where you allocate land uses and so forth. The major street plan was adopted in 1968, a long time ago, also part of the, of the, of the Comprehensive Plan. It's supposed to guide right-of-way dedication in, in the subdivision and zoning process, but it's not binding technically. It covers the city and the five, it's five-mile jurisdiction outside of it. There is no street hierarchy in there today, which also, in addition to its date, that also makes it outdated, outdated. It makes it difficult to coordinate with long-term capital improvements programs with funding requests from the federal or state government and so forth. So, that's a tie that we, a knot we plan to untie as, as part of these updates. So, the reason we're doing this are several. First of all, obviously, these, these plans are now outdated, both because of the, the amount of time it's taken to update them and also your brand-new land use policies in Map for Mobile. We need to do a better job of bridging the gap between what the Map for Mobile policies say and what happens with current zoning, and this will help us get there and balance your long-term policies with on-the-ground reality. And that's the reason why we've had so many meetings leading up to all of this and are continuing to have them. So, as this slide shows, the, the consultant team met with a lot of stakeholders, both in the city and in external to city government, with other stakeholders, private stakeholders, neighborhoods, the real estate development industry, institutions like hospitals and so forth, and, and the business community, civic organizations and so forth. We want to hear from as many people as, as we could before we put all of these maps and, and background text together. The Future Land Use Map is the first document I want to talk about because this builds on Map for Mobile and will really create a blueprint for setting up the new zoning districts. Now, this map is not itself a zoning map. This should dictate and, and help guide the city in administering the zoning ordinance and making zoning decisions and so forth. And it's also not going to be a one-size-fits-all. We've got twelve land use categories that I'll show you here in a second, but we want to make sure that every part of the city gets equal attention in terms of design quality, in terms of design outcome, and so forth. But while at the same time, making sure that what happens when we write the zoning ordinance is sensitive to the context of the neighborhood, of the corridors, of the market demands in those areas and so forth. One thing you're going to find with this document as well, and that's going to build on Map for Mobile. on Map for Mobile, like I said, it's going to become part of Map for Mobile, and like that document, it's going to be heavy on visuals. So like this one here, it shows you the differences between different types of densities. One thing our new regulations will address that a lot of them don't is what planners are starting to call the missing middle in housing. A lot of people think of housing as a dichotomy between low-density, single-family use and high-rise apartments, but there are a lot of products in between that meet the various and sundry demands for housing that a community like this has. And those will be addressed both in the policies and the zoning regulations. An important part of what we're doing as well is coordinating land use and transportation. It doesn't make sense to design a future land use map that calls for a certain type, use, and character of development, and then put on top, superimpose on top of that as a street or a road that's completely inconsistent with that character. So we want to make sure the two are working hand in hand, that the streets we put in a neighborhood, in an area, support the land use around it, that the land use and the character of development that occurs around it is consistent with the streets. And so we want to make sure that those two things are in concert with each other. And this is the draft, this is the draft plan. We're going to present this to the Planning Commission on Thursday. We also have a meeting Thursday night with the general public where we'll explain all of this in better detail. But what this does is it takes those development areas in Map for Mobile and it breaks them down into a finer grain. So we talk more about the specific types of uses that would occur, more about the character of development in those areas, and really set the table for new zoning districts that we're going to write. We also introduce what we've called a downtown waterfront category, that area currently being principally industrial, and those industrial uses are important to this city's economy, to the region's economy. But we also are introducing policies that are going to make room for some recreational uses, for access to the waterfront and so forth. We're going to protect parks and open spaces, and we have land use categories for those, along with priority investment opportunity areas that get to where the city spends money on its capital improvements program. We have 12 land use categories. There's two residential, there's five mixed-use and commercial, there's two industrial, and then there's the waterfront, there's parks and open space, and an institutional category as well. Those will be written out in both text and visuals to describe what the characters of those areas are, and that's just a cut sheet. And then the priority investment areas will speak to where and how the city makes public improvements. Now, that's not a development regulation, nor does it really set the table for development regulation, but it does indicate where the city wants to create priorities for new investment in streets, in drainage improvements, in parks, in open space, and other things. And this is an example of one. Michigan Avenue is part of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, and that's an example of one that could be a priority that the city can look at when, I know Mr. Dave's mentioned that there's a $250 million backlog in infrastructure, and you're always trying to prioritize where that money goes, and it's a hard thing to decide where you spend money first and how you allocate it. And so we're hoping that these policies can help in making those decisions. And as I mentioned earlier, the Future Land Use Map is not a zoning map. It doesn't require anybody to do anything or prohibit anybody to do anything, but it's going to set the table for the new zoning district categories that we adopt. Now, we've already put together a matrix, it's kind of hard to read at the scale of the PowerPoint here, but this matrix ties these new land use categories to your existing zoning categories. And so when that's adopted, when this is adopted, and we're anticipating sometime early May, I think, to adopt this, there's going to be a little bit of gap between when this, when this document comes into being and when you have your new zoning districts in place. And so there will be a similar matrix that's done that replaces this one at the end of this process. But in the interim, this one will guide you in making zoning and rezoning decisions as we do that. And we'll also be working on, in the zoning districts, new zoning metrics that are consistent with the character policies that are set out in both Map for Mobile and in this document. So your setbacks, your building heights, your building design standards, and so forth, all of that working together, even landscaping and riparian corridors, those sorts of things should be character-specific. And so that will all become part of this mix as well. And then the major street map, as I mentioned, has a new classification system based on the street categories that you will see in the MPO's long-range plans and the state DOT's long-range plans at the federal level as well. And that's going to assist if you have a funding request, for example, for a parkway or a boulevard, which is consistent with the street character that's laid out in Map for Mobile. This will allow you to integrate that request as you make funding requests to the state, to the federal government, and so forth, because they don't, they don't know what a parkway or a boulevard is. They'd know what a collector or an arterial, those sorts of things. So we're going to make sure that both of those things are addressed, both of those classifications are made and tagged for each street that's part of the major street plan. Some streets were declassified just for a number of factors, lack of right-of-way, change in relevance, maybe there's another project that took care of the transportation demands for that street, maybe there was a population growth since 1968, may have gone someplace else, maybe it doesn't support what's in the Future Land Use Map. So there are a number of streets that were declassified because of that and some that were added to support the Future Land Use Map. So there will be a lot of changes when you see and you look at the specific streets that are in there. And here's the listing of streets. We can make that either by area or by street so that it's easy to find, but each of those has a description. It has both a character classification, boulevard, parkway, or so forth, and a functional classification as well. These will be implemented through right-of-way standards that will become part of the zoning and subdivision regulations. We've already started to draft those and circulate them to the city's public works officials and others in terms of, you know, number of traffic lanes, sidewalks, whether you have them on both sides, one side, how wide they are, whether you have street trees or not, curbs, all of those things, all the, and bike lanes, those sorts of things, those geometric design standards will flow from the classification assigned to those streets in the major street plan. And then finally, we're already working on the next stage of this. We've got draft landscaping regulations that we're discussing based on the Right Treaty or Right Place Committee, the pre-meeting ordinance that should be coming in front of you shortly. Then, at the end of that, a complete rewrite and overhaul of your zoning regulations. Right now, your zoning regulations are a combination of a very old, conventional zoning model, which, when I say it's old and it's conventional, I'm not trying to be pejorative. There are some advantages to that. One advantage is that people understand, or at least people who work in the development community, understand how that works because they've worked with it for quite a long time. And then you have a very advanced form-based model. You know, this is the best of the best practices in downtown in the Village of Spring Hill, and those are very specific as to development outcomes, but they have some issues of their own as well. And so we want to make sure that all of this is blended into something where you have one set of definitions. We have building and site design standards that we can customize to different parts of the city in a way that makes sense for what's around them, that address use, that address what the buildings look like, and address where the buildings are sited, where the parking lots go, how landscaping works, how much you have, what your riparian corridors are, and so forth. So we want to address all of those as a unified whole as we get this up to date and make the code easier to read and at the same time, consistent with what you've said you want to see happen in the city, in Map for Mobile, and soon in the Future Land Use Plan. So with that, that's, we have the, this schedule here shows you where we've been, all our different meetings with technical workshops, consultations with stakeholders, with the general public. Number 10, the final report, we're planning for, to come before you shortly, and then hopefully adoption by, I think, May 17th for both of these documents. And soon after that, you will start to see draft zoning ordinances, diagnostic reports, and then drafts of the new zoning regulations and implement all of this. So with that, I thank you for your attention and your support for this project, and look forward to any questions or comments you have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Any questions?
I do have a question. Just to clarify, the timetable envisions the adoption of the FLUM and the MSM by May, whatever that was, May 17th.
Yes, sir.
And then the actual zoning changes would come later on down the road.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So is it fair to say that the FLUM and the MSM are plans that then will, the zoning changes will execute on the plans? Is that, is that fair?
Correct. Yes, sir. They both, both of those documents will become part of Map for Mobile. So they'll be part of the plan, and then that will create a blueprint for the new zoning regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I really enjoy listening to all this and knowing that, especially representing what is relatively the new part of town in West Mobile, and looking at a zoning code that goes back to 1968. And so a lot of missteps, a lot of frustration, especially for now-long-term residents that are there for, the neighborhoods are becoming older in a sense, they're 40 and 30 and whatnot years old. So just looking forward to having this be really a dynamic pathway for us to make sure that we're ensuring people's quality of life in our city and that their investment, either business or residential, is sound and stable. So again, thank you very much, and I just look forward to this whole evolutionary process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. And I know Mark is going to be around. Shayla, also a reminder when the unveiling is for the public?
Yes, this Thursday at Government Street Baptist Church at 65 and Government Boulevard at 6 o'clock.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. With that, we are adjourned.